Welcome to people visiting with us today and joining us. And it's always good to have the SDE staff and all colleagues on the board here. This is the Connecticut State Board of Education meeting call for Monday. Call for Wednesday, November 1st, 2023 at 9:30 a.m. Now 9:30 and I will call the meeting to order. If everyone will please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance. Hey, I am Karen, the voice of Walton Chair of the State Board of Education. And we will begin with public participation. As your name is called, we ask you to come to the mic and state your name for the record. We'll give you three minutes for a public. And if you start to go beyond the three minutes, I'll give you a gentle reminder to start wrapping up your last thought there. Chair Benham will call. Christine Revstock.
Good morning, everybody. Happy November. I'm Christine Revstock, Middletown. I'm also the executive director of media and communications for LGBTS United. We have a goal line date of December 1st, so fingers crossed. There's a book that's been found in our Connecticut school libraries and children's sections of public libraries. I like to read it X32. It's also been a recommended reading list. The name of the book is called Gender Queer, and I have a random page here. Has some graphic details to it. It is an illustrated book. Target age is 12 to 18. I have a child here. When I was 11 or 12, the first time I can remember fantasizing about having a penis, I was lying holy cloth on a hillside under an open sky. I held an open folded handful of grass between my legs. See, in the knowledge that if discovered, I could release my imaginary number and would disintegrate back into scattered spots. For years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into the front of my pants and then quickly manipulating the bulge. This would dissolve into hip thrusting while thinking of my latest gay ship. Little sexual innuendo. Rememberingly, I got off once while driving, just rubbing the front of my jeans and imagining getting a blowjob. So this is in our education system. To me, this is age inappropriate for our children, and I just want to bring that to your attention. We also seen some of Connecticut's worst. 10 days ago in Avon, Connecticut, the Monster Liberty Hartford County Symposium. Item, Colonel Wright, what's the controversy? I was asked to be one of the panelists that day. James Lindsay is a featured speaker. What greeted us was hatred by protesters holding Stop the Hate signs, Love Wins, Stop banning books. The truth of the matter was, in that symposium, there was no mention of books to be banned. Not at all. Just calling for age appropriate books and no book by name was listed or anyone brought up either. And they hang on Democrats on their Facebook page. Said, we don't want a hateful extremist group of racist, transphobes and homophobic. Well, James Lindsay, the future speaker, didn't touch on any of them. He mentioned what you would call transgenderism, which I alluded to later in my speech. It wasn't transphobic. It wasn't homophobic. It wasn't racist. We just talked about what's going on today in our education system. Was there transphobia on display that day? Yes, but all of it was directly to me. By those protesters holding the signs, Stop the Hate, Love Wins. And I bring this up today because there were Board of Education members, people running for Board of Education box in for next week's election. Teachers pass the cred.
Your final thought?
I'd ask, Monster Liberty is not a hateful group. Thank you.
Seeing no other public comment? Thank you. We'll move on with our agenda. Item four is consideration of the minutes. The chair wants to make a motion to approve the October 4th, 2023 Board of Education meeting minutes. Is there a motion? Properly seconded? Any discussion?
I have a suggestion. Page three, where we present Kathy Dempsey under transition. Given current usage, can we say move to OPM?
Okay, I'm sorry. Where are you?
My page three reported the chair congratulating Kathy Dempsey under transition. And it just seems to me that given current usage, we're a little more specific. Remove to OPM.
Move to OPM. Any other edits? Can you hear me the best? Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, with that one noted edit, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are going to do a few shifts of our agenda to make best use of people's time who have traveled to be with us today. So bear with us on that. But I do want to take a moment to congratulate our own Vice Chair Erin Benham, who was recently elected at the NASB National Convention to succeed our own Woody Exley as the Northeast Director. I think the right title, Northeast Director. So congratulations. Thank you. Connecticut is carrying on a legacy of holding it down at NASB. So thank you, Woody, for your service. Thank you, Erin, for all that you will bring to that, to that board as well. We have an important agenda and things that we will be taking on today, including the opportunity to review the and take action on the proposed five-year plan, which this board has been deeply engaged in working and we've been excited about the level of public participation that's been engaged in that. So we look forward to that. This is the month where we will get to hear from our commissioner on the results of the Next Generation Accountability System Report for 2023 and report it to be able to delve into that report at this meeting. And then we'll be joined by special guests who are presenting their report on the status of disengaged youth. But we will move things around a bit in order to do that. But we want to recognize our special guests that are with us today. Which are our parent educator of the year award honorates and those who were the semifinalists and are being recognized. So they are with us today to take a time away from their classrooms. And we want to ensure that we have an opportunity to recognize them here in the audience today. So I'm ordering item 11A forward, which is the 2024 Anne Marie Murphy Paraeducator of the Year and semifinalist recognition. Educated semifinalists. So Julie Quinney is here. Would love to have her come forward and be recognized at the table. Welcome, Julie. Julie is coming to us from Coventry, where she works in the Hale Early Education Center. Julie is an early childhood paraeducator who takes pride in being a part of the front lines of education. She assists the head teacher with planning and preparing lessons, provides daily small group and one-to-one instruction to students with disabilities, reports students with self-care needs, and assists with students' behavioral management plan. In the preschool setting, she's a critical part of the assessment process. She works closely with the classroom teacher to collect data and monitor student progress. Julie's dedication to her school and students was highlighted when she was given the opportunity to become the long-term substitute in a preschool class. She was able to utilize all the skills and knowledge from her work as a paraeducator to help every student in her class grow significantly in all areas of mathematics, English language arts, and social emotional skills. Julie believes in the importance of relationships and that one positive interaction can change the trajectory of a student's life. Julie, congratulations and thank you for joining us and stay at the table. Joining Julie at the table, if James Randy Dahar is here. And if I'm saying it incorrectly, please let me know. David?
Dayer.
Dayer?
Yep.
Please join us at the table from Ocean Avenue Learning Academy. Randy is not only a paraeducator, but one of Learn's first job coaches for the Learn Transitional Academy. He dedicates his work to making connections with surrounding communities, provide his students with job assignments which promote necessary social skills. Randy transports students to local community work sites and to other extracurricular activities throughout the week. Through modeling and preparing task analysis for his students, he is responsible for collecting data and reporting transitions assessments to the special education team. When in the classroom, he ensures to approach each student's needs based upon their specific problematic needs, which include math, budgeting, reading, organizing, inventory, writing, computer, personal hygiene, cooking, pre-occasional tasks, and cleaning. From academics to assisting with physical education activities, Randy is actively engaged in balancing students' classroom activities with time in the community. His greatest reward as a paraeducator and job coach is seeing all his students graduate and obtain employment. Randy, congratulations. Joining Julie and Randy at the table, please, Amy Santoro from Holly Elementary School in Newtown. As a paraeducator for nearly six years, Amy has worked with students with academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. She assists classroom teachers with small group instruction where she reinforces instruction. She has worked diligently to provide high levels of support for students with difficulty self-regulating. She recognizes precursor behaviors in order to prevent heightened escalation and offers tools and strategies to students. Amy believes by building positive, caring, and respectful relationship with students, you can have a lasting impact. She ensures to celebrate all student successes, whether it's mastering that challenging sight word, doing something kind, or staying calm in a situation that was previously triggering. She is always willing to step up and step in for every one of her students, but also for college. Amy's goal as a paraeducator is to foster a growth mindset and help students develop skills that will benefit students for life. Congratulations, Dave. And our final semifinalist from Stafford Middle School, Ben Trowbridge. A dedicated paraeducator who provides one-to-one support to students where he teaches adaptive and communication skills. He has taken on leadership roles within his school where he coordinated schedules and facilitates student coverage. Ben takes role, his role as a paraeducator to the next level. He is highly involved in the school community, developing a school garden, leading learning lab, long-term sub for reading class, assistant girls soccer coach, crisis team member, and homework club. He attends meetings for all grade levels, the school's special education team, and weekly meetings with fellow paraeducators in order to improve educational experiences for students. Ben's goal each day is to have a positive effect on not just my students, but the student body, including staff. Each day as a paraeducator, Ben strives to provide an environment where students can learn and achieve and achieve more independence because of the positive learning experience he has provided. Congratulations, Ben. And our 2024 Anne Marie Murphy Paraeducator of the Year Award Honorary from the Joseph DePaolo Middle School in Southington is Dawn DeCal. Dawn, please. Dawn has worked with a student, with a student who's been blind since he had, since he had eye surgery at the age of second grade. He will be moving on to middle school this year. He's an advocate for seeking out and translating general education materials for his student as well as educating and ensuring teachers that he's a bright student and has interests similar to other boys of age. She ensures that he's a welcome member of the school's learning community. Dawn taught herself to read and write Braille, is working on learning Braille for math, and then wants to learn Braille for music as she is supporting her student in participating in the Silver Star Band every week at the high school. She seeks out professional learning opportunities for herself to support the student, and she collaborates often with her students' teachers. She even established a Braille Day in the students' classroom so other students could learn about Braille. Dawn's advocacy for this student continues outside of the school learning community as she was influential in getting a sign put up near the student's home to alert motorists to be cautious. The student's father shared with her that his son loves to hit people, but he worries about us chasing the ball into the stream. Dawn began her career as a paraeducator working with students on the autism spectrum. Congratulations, Dawn. We have, we have a gift for each of you, but before I do that, I want to open up to the board if there's any. All right, I think that said it all.
I really just want to make sure that I continue to voice wherever I am and in your presence that our paraeducators are an integral part of our education system. And we want to make sure you know that and how much we appreciate what you do every single day. So congratulations. Thank you and great work.
Good mind coming. We'd love to have a group photo and be able to present you. Congratulations. Thank you so much for taking the time. Thank you. Always such a highlight to have an opportunity to shine a spotlight on our paraeducators. The essential role that they play for us. All for your work. All who dedicate themselves to this. Your sorority members are all invited to join on November 15th. And the Bush now is celebrating Connecticut 2024 Teacher of the Year. So she needs to join us as well. Okay, so we will move on. To our commissioner's report.
The commissioner's report. Thank you again and good morning. That distraction is not in the room, by the way, it's outside. Don't worry.
All over there.
But Chair Val Walton, Vice Chair Benham, and all of board members, good morning. We know, as you've mentioned, that we have a robust agenda today, so I will move expeditiously to get us through those items. And so we're beginning an agency report today that we purpose to be the official release of our 2022, 23 state accountability results. As Jika Politrion, who you know is the chief performance officer, will present. And we will answer questions, and if there's press here as well afterwards, then he'll step out to answer those questions. So with that, I'll call as we to the table to get us started, and then I'll finish our committee's report and agency updates right after that.
Thank you, commissioner. Sorry. Right, uh, they focus. I tend to be an auditory learner, so all these incentives are going right in. Shut them out. Well, good morning and thank you again for, for this opportunity to present the release of our Next Generation Accountability System from 2023. Last month, I shared the results from our assessment and our attendance from 2023, and this time now we're presenting sort of the comprehensive report from our accountability system. And before I launch into the subject matter and the details, I just want to acknowledge the work of the team in the performance office. And there are two members in here, I think two of them are here, Danielle Busquet and Renee Savoy. Two of the several members, but they're the core four members who, for the first time, we are releasing these results at the earliest possible time. So really want to acknowledge their work. Putting out this accountability system requires pulling in data from multiple sources. Over 30 different data sets actually have to be pulled in and matched at the student level so that we can report on school, district, and state-level results, not just for all students, but for every student or race, ethnicity, gender, students with disabilities, English learners, students from low-income families, our high-needs group. All of those subgroups are available for every indicator. So that requires a tremendous amount of work. So I want to acknowledge that because it's only through that work that we actually get a holistic view of school and district performance. When we bring in multiple indicators that go beyond test scores, this one, we're able to do that. The system was started, implementation in 24, 25, I mean, 2014, 15, I'm sorry. And it's the foundation of our ESSO plan that was approved in August of 2017. And this accountability system, again, was built with a lot of input from district and school leaders across the state and other stakeholders as well. So this is a comprehensive system that, that pulls it all together. The purpose of the system is to not name and shame schools and make them feel bad as much as to really use the information as reflective information to make good decisions. And the idea of the system also is for us at the SDE to bring support and recognition, again, not to just name and shame, as might have been the case with perhaps older accountabilities prior to this. And equity is, is at the forefront of our work in the accountability system. The high-needs groups that we have, which is really English learners, students with disabilities, and those from low-income families garner substantial weight in our system. A school cannot be a high-functioning or rated school in the system if they don't do right by their students. And that is, that is significantly important to us. So this slide gives you a high-level picture of all the different indicators, and I'm not going to go into the detail of every data point. That's not the purpose here. I want you to know, on the left-hand side, we have sort of identified the buckets that these indicators comprise from. So that's to give that holistic picture. We look at academic achievement. How are students doing in this school? We look at academic growth, which is how have the same students actually grown from one grade to the next? And one of the biggest critiques of the old accountability system under NCLB was that we are only measuring the kids you have. We're not actually measuring how kids improve. So academic growth actually is a big part of our system. Chronic absenteeism carries weight in the system. We also look at post-secondary readiness. Are our students actually taking the steps to be ready for the next level? Are they taking and passing requisite courses and exams, whether they be academically oriented or career-oriented? We look at graduation and post-secondary readiness, including whether they're on track to graduate in high school. And it's an early indication of on-time graduation. We also look at whether they're enrolling in post-secondary, again, academic or career-oriented, as long as it's credit-based at our universities and colleges across the country, we get that information. And then lastly, we look at fitness and the arts as well. Participation in fitness and student performance on our, participation in the arts and student performance on the physical fitness assessment. And I'll discuss some of the trends in the subsequent slides. So there are bright spots in these, in these results that are important to mention and highlight. We already spoke the chronic absenteeism decline. It's still higher than pre-pandemic levels, and we want to bring them even below the pre-pandemic levels. But they did decline for the first time, and that is important to acknowledge and celebrate and keep the work moving. Math and science achievement improved, I mentioned this the last time. Our post-secondary readiness measures are also showing improvement. And I, we had a presentation maybe at the last board meeting about the dual credit work that we're doing, and that's contributing to some of that. We also have schools that we identify as focus and turnaround schools, and we have those schools for consistent low performance that were identified in previous years are now exiting those statuses because they have made adequate improvements so that they're no longer in need of state support. So we're able to release them from those, from those identifications. And then we also are identifying schools of distinction. We have 153 schools of distinction that are being identified for high achievement or high growth. And 38 of those schools are in our alliance districts, again, highlighting that group schools exist everywhere. And we need to recognize what they're doing, find out what's contributing to their success, and promulgate those. I've already spoken to this in the last release, but I'll just mention it briefly here to show that dual credit, if you look at the last column, the percent needing dual credit, these are 11th and 12th graders. We have about 24% of our 11th and 12th graders earning at least three college credits before high school graduation. We're looking to continue to grow that. We have about a similar percentage of students passing AP courses. Now, some of them could be the same students. We also have students who meet SAT benchmarks. We also give credit for ACT in this system. And we have several IV schools as well. The SDE continues to fund fee waivers for the AP exam for students from low-income families. And those contributions exceed more than a half a million dollars annually to support that, that AP exam fees for students from low-income families. And we have to also recognize existing work through the Perkins Program, the CCP College Career Pathway Program that works in partnership with our community colleges to promote dual credit options for. Challenges do remain, and there are several things we're doing about those challenges, but we want to acknowledge them first. Achievement still lacks pre-pandemic levels. Our growth slowed a little bit this past year, and that is something we're watching and continuing to work on. On-track to high school graduation is at about, about the lowest levels that we have seen in the system. And that is concerning, and I mentioned this in the past, but I'm highlighting it again here that those on-track rates are something, again, because they are a harbinger for four-year on-time graduation. So we need to watch and, and really take action on that particular item. And there are several things we're doing which I'll speak to. Post-secondary entrance also lags pre-pandemic levels, especially for students from low-income families. There are many things in the works, but that is something we also need to be proactive about. And physical fitness, again, those achievement in the, in that assessment also continues to lag pre-pandemic levels. So let's take a closer look at on-track graduation. And you'll see in this chart, in which on-track graduation, we're looking at primarily nine. And you'll see in this chart, in which on-track graduation, we're looking at primarily ninth graders here. And whether they're earning the requisite credits to be on pace to graduate on time in four years. And that threshold changed with the increased graduation requirements. So starting in twenty-one, twenty-two, we now look for at least six credits in that ninth grade year. Most high schools were already at twenty-four, twenty-five credits even before the requirement went into place. But we implemented the change in twenty-one, twenty-two. And you can look even prior to our implementing the change, the rates were declining. And now are around seventy-four percent for students with high needs. Where students without high needs, their non-high needs peers are almost at ninety-three percent, a nineteen percentage. Yeah, and that is again something that that we continue to pay close attention to and bring a lot of resources and supports, which I'll speak to in just a second. In particular, I want to speak to the data that we bring to the local decision-making here from EdSite. And again, this is also part of the performance work that happens in our in our office. But I want to make sure that uh everyone's aware of the kinds of student level information that we're able to provide to districts. EdSite Secure, which is a secure part of the system, provides authorized users in districts with access to student level data. And this data system, actually the data follow the student as they might move from one district to another. So if a student moves from one district to another, the day they are reported in the system to us as being in the new district, the very next day, that new district has all the information, longitudinal information that's in our possession, available to them. They don't have to wait for that paper records to transfer and which might take a week or two weeks or sometimes even longer. So the system electronically allows for that transfer of records. We also have an early indication tool in the system where we use the longitudinal data tell districts at an individual student level, which of their students are needing high levels of support or medium levels of support to meet particular milestones. And for students in grades seven through nine, that milestone is whether they're on track to graduation in ninth grade or not. So we actually tell s- high schools for their seventh graders or actually all schools for their seventh graders. Whether their seventh graders need high support to be on track in ninth grade, whether their eighth graders need high support. So districts get early indication of those students. So that's one of the tools that we bring to it. And that modeling that we do uses a whole wealth of information. It uses prior attendance, prior behavior, force performance, mobility, test scores, all that information is used to tell the district which of their students might be might need additional support to do that. And again, they get this at an individual student level. So yeah, I just want to mention that because it's important to know that these data are available to districts so that they can add and bring that support to those students. Another area of concern that I highlighted in the report was post-secondary entrance. And this chart is presenting on the left-hand side for students from low income families, on the right-hand side, those not from low income families. And I want you to look at that blue line with the circle, the dots. And you'll notice on the left-hand side that that blue line has declined for the recent graduating classes and remains at around fifty-one percent. I looked at it, uh I looked at some national data and this seems comparable to where national trends are. About fifty-one percent of students who graduated from high school who are from low income families are enrolling in some type of post-secondary within one year after high school graduation. And that's declined from around fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent and it's not picked up. And again, just to reiterate, post-secondary doesn't just mean academic four-year degrees. It could be two-year degrees. It could be career oriented. Certificate programs that are credit based, so it includes all of those, all of those areas. And so those have not picked up. And there are several initiatives in play, turn those uh turn the curve on those items. And I want to sort of speak briefly to those. We have one of the few states in the country that offer free community college through the PAC program. Continue to make sure our counselors and our students are aware of that program. We have the automatic admissions program now. Students who have a GPA of three point oh or higher can seek automatic admission to our four years. They may not be able to choose the particular program, but they can get automatically admitted to the university. And this year, that program has been further streamlined by the CCSU system, the CSCU system. Uh we have the FASA challenge because that's another important indication of the likelihood of the students' matriculation. We have the dual credit program we've talked about, that today's skills, tomorrow's career speaks to all our Perkins initiatives. And the Aspiring Educators Diversity Scholarship Program that also brings significant resources for students seeking to pursue education pathways in our in our approved EEPs in the state. So there are a lot of things we're bringing to try to sort of combat that declining trend in post-secondary enrollment. So to sort of bring it, bring it all to a close, uh here, we do identify as part of this schools that need state support because that is one of the purposes of the accountability system so that we can target resources where they're needed the most. We have thirty-eight schools that are identified as turnaround schools for consistent low overall performance. And the word consistent is important. We're not identifying a school based on a one-year foot in your data. But we're looking at multiple years of consistent underperformance. Only then does a school get identified. And just to give you some context, we're working with a universe of nine hundred and fifty schools, nine hundred and fifty to a thousand schools. So we're identifying thirty-eight of them as turnaround schools and twenty-eight of them as focus schools for low growth or achievement or students with high needs. So sometimes these schools may not necessarily be in alliance districts. Majority tend to be, but not always. Uh and we have schools where there is a student group, the high needs group is not growing as fast as we need to, among the bottom ten percent, not just for one year. Three years in a row in terms of their academic growth. Then that school gets identified and they get access to supports and resources. And there are several grants that are available. So and again, uh we we list the wide array of supports that we offer, model curriculum, science of reading masterclass, we offer interim block assessments to guide instruction through the year. We are investing in a high dosage tutoring in grade six through nine mathematics. We're providing summer enrichment grants. We have the leap with the leap effect that we released recently and 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 I'm referencing several several other initiatives that are that are going on. Three million dollar initiative for the registered apprenticeship program, partnership with our labor department. So I think I'll bring this to a close and take any questions on our accountability results.
Thank you, Ajit, for that comprehensive presentation that offers a look at where things are starting to progress um in the right direction and also a number of silver effects that I want us to keep in mind as we think about the next presentation we're going to hear on our Disengage Youth, which um is going to connect with this as well. And I want us to keep that in mind as we think about the approval of the five-year plan that is in front of us, uh I think, or for the challenges that are in front of the reading without work. Board members, are there questions, discussion?
Just a couple of clarifying questions, and you probably told me this before, so I apologize. Um on slide seven around post-secondary readiness, in terms of the the AP IB are those that they are taking or that they've passed?
Those are uh actual passing. So when we look at, we actually receive data from the college board on AP exams. And we look for students who may have passed, but at least one AP exam with a three or better. In the case of IB, it's a cut of four out of seven, so it's four or better. Uh and so each exam has its own particular cut score. In the case of SAT, we're looking at students meeting benchmark on both. ELA in math and in ACT, it's three out of four subjects meeting the ACT benchmark.
And then one other question. Is there any way that the, referencing slide eleven around uh post-secondary outcome? Is there any way to identify students who earned an industry recognized credential by the time they graduated high school? So that they don't need to actually go on to another institution, so to speak?
We currently do not have that data. We have talked about central sources of getting that data. There aren't really been central sources. We've talked about potentially getting it from districts themselves. I think the the com- the comparability issue will be to make sure that whatever industry credentials we include truly will set the student up for self-sufficiency and success without potentially going to post-secondary. The one thing we are doing is, which we will be able to release uh early next year is actual earnings, average earnings of our high school graduates going back to two thousand and seven. And we're going to be providing longitudinal information on that and we'll have dashboard on EdSite. So we'll be able to see, and that will be disaggregated by students who go to college and students who never touch college. So we will be able to see what happens to those students who never actually pursue college and what are their earnings for generalists. So we will have that data as well.
Mr. Benham. Thank you, Ajit. As always, put this very thorough before and early. Yes, who knows to all of you. I I still appreciate the transparency and I think that's what's so important here. On as Chair Walton had said, our plan that we're going to vote on later in the day certainly is a crosswalk to the program. Certainly have been aware of this and and up to date with your office with all the the focus of where we need to be focused. So um the bright spots, I was glad to see that absenteeism is one of those bright spots because I think that will be the thing that turns, starts, we'll see the turn. That's going to make a big difference and highlighting the LEAP program, I think, is one thing. And as as we see that starting and expanding through the state, I I do hope we see that as a constant in our state because it has been proven that it works. So I'm hoping to see that. So again, I just appreciate the transparency and how important it is that we get this out and we get it out thoroughly and we start our work. But thank you very much.
Yes. Oh, Ajit, um to these, does this reflect the technical high school as well? For example, are students, many graduate, say, for example, with their licensing, their licensing hairdressing or CNA or many of the manufacturing. Are those included in this or no?
Are you referring to this particular chart?
Do you capture that?
So technical high school students are part of the information, so they're all included. If a student never touches a post-secondary institution, then it would not show up here as them having enrolled. They would be part of the non-enrolled. And so it it really depends on, uh but when we do the earnings data, they will be part of it. And uh in terms of, we will be able to look at average earnings of all students and longitudinal trajectories. So we will actually have data down to the district and school level. So you will be able to see for the technical high school, the CTEC district, what are the earnings trajectories for students who touch some type of post-secondary, students who don't. So if if so, if they earn and you know, sometimes you can earn manufacturing credentials without touching post-secondary. But I think more often, students do touch some type of post-secondary program to complete their their credentialing. But we will be able to see how those different groups of students do as it pertains to earnings. Should be very illuminating.
I would like to try to see if there's a path to being in to be able to answer those questions in terms of those students. While we will in aggregate see what those earnings are, being able to track it back to, did they earn their CNA or et cetera, et cetera, as they're in high school. Um I recognize the the challenge of the the source, but I wonder for going back to the high school seems like an appropriate place to to tap into that. But then also, in terms of identifying which ones do we want to do? I mean, perhaps a starting place is looking towards the the Governor's Workforce Council. I don't know if I have the right name of that. In order to see, okay, so at least for the the areas of of I interest for the state. Can we start to track the the credentials that align those identified industries?
No, I think that makes that makes a lot of sense. We started collecting the seal of by literacy, and I know you you are all very familiar with that from the districts at the student level a a year and a half ago. And we built that system to be scalable, to accommodate industry credentials. I I totally agree with you that the first step is to identify the ones that truly are the high value ones. And I will be looking to uh our chief academic officer and the partnership with the Career Technical Education Unit to sort of establish what are those high value credentials that we should consider in such a system. So totally that's.
That's a a lay-in break, but the uh the emphasis on work-based learning and apprenticeship when they are in high school. It's it's so critical in our, in the technical high school system because those kids do enter the workforce at a higher pay grade.
I totally, totally agree, I think. And not just for the short term, but also long term, so that we can look six years out, students who graduated, what happened? So, yeah.
Well, I just really wanted to thank Ajit and the team in the performance office for the work that they do. We do have a commitment to transparency and so making this data publicly available really allows us in our district to talk about the cross-sector collaboration partnerships that is so necessary uh across the system to ensure that our students are empowered to realize their infinite possibilities, uh which is really what we talk about. So I just really want to thank Ajit and the team for continuing to do that. And I know it's going to exit to maybe answer reporter questions as necessary as there are no more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll just wrap up. I know we're moving with time here. You have a copy of the deck uh and my report in your file, so you can take a look at it. The shout-outs are really appreciating the work that we've been doing to look at that teacher of the year that we we had. Teacher of the year that occurred this past week, uh also the parent educator of the of the year that that picture is here. The information that we provided on the the effect press conference that we did, parent engagement and all staff. And I just want to mention, we brought all our staff together. It was really wonderful to see the numbers of new members of the staff uh that were in the room with us, we continue to do that work. Uh and so we're just appreciative. Vice Chair Benham, what attended and was able to talk to, I think, as well to talk about how the work, they actually did some work. You know, we're implementing the boards in the grand. And so that worked all right, so we just wanted to do that. But you can take a look at the pictures and see what we've been up to for the last month. So with that, I know we'll force our pass back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um are there any other questions for Commissioner? Uh, thank you. Okay, so we're trying to keep an arc going here and we we've just got a set of results on what's happening for our learners that are engaged in our districts right now. I think it's important to complement that with a look at um the findings and information about young people that have got disconnected, disengaged from our. So um the Dalio Education uh partners are joining us today. They have a history of really finding a spotlight on what's happening with young people in our state. Where we are not um meeting their potential um with the with the sort of bright uh set of resources and support to to get them to where they need to be. And I uh had an opportunity, and many of us probably have, to um hear about the release of the latest report that they put out. And I saw it most important that they come in front of us as a state board and think about this population of of young people and share with us what they've learned. So um at this moment, I would like us to move to item eleven B um and item for discussion and hear from our friends at Dalio, um Dalio Education Report, Getting Young People Back on Track. Please welcome to the table Barbara Dalio and the Verden. And if you think you have anything else allowed, yes, welcome. And if you think you have anything else allowed, yes, welcome. So much for joining us. Love to give you an opportunity to share with us and then engage in some dialogue. If you'd like to first introduce yourself.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Board Chair, for all the, and Russell Socker for the invitation to present, but also for the great work that you do and care. For the past 10 years, we have been helping the off-track and disconnected young people. We commissioned a report to throw some light on this population and find some way to help the 190,000 young people that are disconnected or at risk. We also would like to work with others to find solutions. Otherwise, the consequences and moral consequences for the state are terrible. Thank you, Commissioner Russell Socker, and indeed, Dr. Paula Grisham for the partnership and leadership in the research.
Morning, folks. Jeremy?
Morning, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Good morning. My name is Adler Coffey. I'm a Senior Portfolio Director with the Project, the Social Investment Fund at Dalio Education. Before I turn it over to Andrew to discuss the findings of the report, I'd like to spend a moment talking about how and from where the data for this report. In addition to 100 interviews with state governors throughout the state, the Boston Consulting, wherever it's Connecticut, longitudinal data system, people who went to obtain individual-level data matched across five of the 14 agencies contributing data. Those agencies were the Coalition to End Homelessness, the Department of Children and Family, the Department of Labor, the Department of Mental Health and Addiction, and the Department, the State Department of Education. Integrated data set from the five named agencies. BCG was able to explore both in-school and out-of-school outcomes of young people who attended Connecticut high schools from 2014 to 2022. Nine years of longitudinal data. BCG also received data from the Department of Corrections and the Judicial Branch, neither of which currently contribute data, but both are collaborating members. It structured the analysis of such a related data that BCG used the following evidence-based definitional framework developed by the Connecticut Bureau. To be clear, these terms do not, do not refer to the young people themselves, but the barriers and challenges they navigate on their journey to adulthood and self-sufficiency. The continuum before you details the status of young people on track, at risk, to disconnect. At-risk pertains to those high school students in jeopardy of not graduating on time. This statute divided into three subcategories. Off-track refers to the experiences of students who have yet to meet the grade-level credit attainment milestones set by the State Department of Education. At-risk due to other factors highlights the challenges of students, exhibit of alarming rates of absenteeism, and behavioral setbacks. Severely off-track are those students experiencing characteristics of being old, off-track and at-risk due to other factors. The disconnected category expresses the challenges experienced by young people in 14 and 26 or not engaged in pro-social institutions or gainfully employed. There are two subcategories here. Modernly disconnected young people, they have a high school diploma, but don't have a job and don't have a post-secondary degree. This group also includes high school non-graduates experiencing underemployment or not being gainfully. Lastly, severely disconnected are those young people who may be incarcerated or have not successfully graduated high school, don't have a GED, and are currently unemployed. Now ask Andrew to discuss the findings of Connecticut's unspoken crisis, getting young people back on track.
Andrew Bergerson, Co-CEO of Dalio Education. I'll try in about four minutes to synthesize, otherwise about a 70-page, very data-rich report. Before I do, let me make two points of context to build on with Barbara and Adler to share. First point is every data point that I'm about to cite, the human life, young person. Every young person has incredible brilliance and resilience in this state. As citizens in Connecticut, it's our collective charge, for everything we can, to help every young person realize their potential. So again, as a former New Haven educator, as a former employee of this very agency, this is personal to me. I know, I appreciate how hard every single person is working in this department. I deeply appreciate the commitment of every member of this board. I deeply appreciate heroes who work in our schools across this state. Our intent here is to raise awareness around young people who have such deep potential and brilliance, but need more support to realize that, to achieve that. We believe deeply that if we can raise public awareness around this statewide crisis, more people will care. And when people care, more people will act, more people will support. That's our intent. And so as we look at what the findings are, based on 2022, there's 615,000 young people between the age of 14 and 26 in Connecticut. 119,000 of them were at risk or disconnected. 63,000 of that group are young people who are disconnected. As Adler described, they may have a high school diploma, but they don't have a job, they're not in the post-secondary, or they may not have a high school diploma or a GED. They may not even have a job, they may even be incarcerated and present. 36,000 are young people who are at risk. In other words, they're high school students. They're at risk of not graduating high school. When we look across this state, that's one in three of high school students, based on 2022 data, one in three. This statewide crisis is every single town. Yes, it's true, concentrations are highest in our cities, but this is every town, but it's truly statewide. When we look at the map based on at-risk, we see town after town, from Sprague to Thompson to North Ucanen, to North Canen, to Stanford, to Hartford, to New Haven and beyond, every town. When we look at school transfers or transience rates across town boundaries, we see that 70% of school transfers in 2022 were across town boundaries. In other words, this requires all of us to work together. When we look at what's happening based on the research, we see that this report from Boston Consulting Group affirms what we've known, which is credit attainment, attendance, behavior, they all matter tremendously, the success through that. What this report contributes to that evidence base is the connection between being at risk today and the possibility of becoming disconnected tomorrow. So if you could turn to the next slide that shows the towns, at least on levels of disconnection. When we look at young people in this state who are disconnected based on the research findings, we can see it's a statewide crisis, every town, every city. This is important to underscore that this is not caused by COVID. Yes, it's true that COVID has accelerated this crisis for young people, but it didn't cause it. In fact, what the report says, what needs the data around young people who are disconnected, is going back to 2015 to 2021, every year, between 60,000 to 70,000 young adults in this state were disconnected every year. And every year, we saw another 10,000 newly disconnect from school for the first time. That trend line is consistent every year from 2015 to 21, 22. We also see through the data dark differences by race. If you were growing up in Connecticut and you identify as black or Hispanic or Latino, you are twice as likely for a young person to experience disconnection. 41% young men of color experience disconnection, based on 2022 data, the findings of this report. What we can see as well, if you turn to the slide of factors associated with disconnection, what we're intending to show here is looking at both in-school and out-of-school factors. This, among many other points, illustrates the power of what Adler described, which is bringing longitudinal integrated data sets together that achieve a holistic understanding of the needs of young people. And so when we look at these in-school and out-of-school factors, we're not at all trying to show causation. This is not a causation analysis. Nor are we trying to say that by receiving a service, we're more or less likely. Rather, the research show that by being exposed to traumas, by being exposed or living in poverty, by moving two or more times between schools during a high school experience, those in-school and out-of-school factors and others elevate the likelihood and increase the risk of a young person experiencing disconnection in this state. In other words, we can see this often before a young person disconnects. Building on some of the power of what the department has done under the Commissioner's leadership and the Chief's leadership, the early warning indicative tools are very, very important. Young people experiencing alternative education, 67% ultimately end up disconnecting. That's the highest risk factor through this research. If you experience alternative education in this state, you're three times more likely to experience disconnection. We all know, and I personally believe by knowing many in this room, that we all care. There is a moral case that we deeply invested in this work, deeply invested in making everything possible so every young person can succeed. We all deeply believe the vision articulated in the five-year conference of plan on your agenda today. I also believe we know that to realize that five-year vision, we'd have to address this statewide crisis. Said differently, it is impossible for the next five years to be success. 119,000 young people remain at risk of disconnection in the state, certainly if 63,000 remain disconnected. For those who may not be persuaded by the moral case, there is also an economic case. As the report suggests, the economic case, in other words, today, presently, we are leaving as a state, as taxpayers, between $650 million to $750 million on the table every single year because of this statewide crisis. Let me explain. $400 million is what Connecticut is currently spending because 63,000 young adults in this state are disconnected from school and work. $400 million is the cost that we are incurring on increased spending on Medicaid, social services, incarceration, and others. Right? We all know it costs $67,000 in the state to incarcerate someone. You all know better than I, it's far less expensive to educate someone. In addition to that, we're foregoing the future benefits or the opportunity cost of 100,000 young adults disconnected from educational work. Imagine if they could get re-engaged to school and ultimately employment by earning a wage. The economic benefit to Connecticut could be up to $350 million a year. By having a wage, benefiting through activity, that's revenue coming in, benefit to Connecticut three inches. We've also looked at the labor market. All of this is happening in a time where there are 90,000 unemployed jobs in Connecticut. We looked at those jobs to discern which of those jobs could a young adult in the state be competitive for. There are about 56,000 which a young person could compete for and fill. Imagine if, over the next several years, the 63,000 young adults in this state who are without work or have a diploma but are looking for work could connect to a job. GDP impact benefit to Connecticut is $5 billion. That's 2% of the Connecticut economy. If we haven't persuaded, or the moral case, I know if you're in this room, you already are, the economic case persuasive. The recommendations, so what do we do? I'll speak to what the report says, which is there are four categories that the report lists by way of recommendations. I want to be clear that BCG, the author of the report, the group, the Dalio Education Commission, did not create these recommendations themselves. Rather, they gathered them from interviewing more than 100 different state boards across this state to learn from experts who are closest to the work in this state. What is working, what is happening, what also could happen. That's where four categories of recommendations emerge. Increase visibility, improve coordination, expand capacity. And every time I read it from the report, I hear the Commissioner's voice, fund effective programs, fund what works. Those four categories are important steps forward that can and are happening across this state. The LEAP Initiative, but I know that this, the part that is championing, is a great example of what it means to fund what works, invest in increasing cognitive absenteeism, continue to support that as results, continue to show progress in that direction. That's one example of them. In addition to that, we know that programs alone aren't going to be the answer to getting all young people back on track. There will be systemic solutions that are required, for sure. But before we jump to those, last one I would say. It's important to take time to listen to, to learn from educators and the young people themselves. This group of 119,000 young adults is a very diverse group. It includes everyone from a 14-year-old who's struggling to pass Algebra I to a 26-year-old severely disconnected, may even be incarcerated, and so many more in between. The solution cannot be one size fits all. It has to meet each young person where they are. It has to help young people realize their brilliance so that we in Connecticut have a brighter future because of them. In a nutshell, that is what this report says. We are so appreciative for the opportunity to present it to you and certainly would welcome any discussion and questions around it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you each, each for joining us. And before I open it up to everybody else, I do want to ask, is, one of the whole recommendations, what specifically would you like this board to do to help increase visibility, increase awareness, expand capacity, and certainly fund effective programs? I think we could sort of get that. What do you see as being helpful for us around those areas?
I appreciate the question. Perhaps we'll start with two suggestions. One is, you all have a platform. Talk about this crisis. We have been intentional in naming this report Connecticut's Unspoken Crisis. We deeply believe the data tells us we have a statewide crisis. We also believe our experience tells us it's largely unseen or unspoken. Anyone who has a platform needs to elevate this crisis so that folks who don't work in schools, folks who aren't engaged in nonprofits, folks who may not have a young person in their home, better understand that this is a statewide issue, that there's an incredible opportunity for you to realize here. That's one response to the great. And second is, this report is possible because of, among others, the department's leadership. In other words, this would not have been able to happen without the Commissioner's support about a year or two ago, a year ago, as well as support from her team, William Chief, Dr. Paula Grisham. That leadership at that time was critical. Connecticut now knows far more about its young people, 14 and 26-year-olds, than most other states do in this country. This is an example of Connecticut leadership. And it's also possible because of the person to my right, Barbara Dalio. Barbara funded this research. She stepped up. It shouldn't be on her every single year to fund this research. This report is of public good. The government has this information. We ought to have this every single year. My colleague Adler, he knows what it takes to actually have this be produced. There's, and somebody, Adler, I'll turn to you to just explain what would it take to publish this report on a manual basis going forward. But that would be two suggestions.
Certainly, I'll let you speak, but that's immediately what came to mind is thinking about A G's presentation a few minutes ago and wanting to see this data on a regular basis incorporated into our work in the system. Go ahead, Adler.
Thank you. So there are two broad strokes that we would recommend happening in the moment to allow for this report to be produced on an annual basis. The first being a governing body with the appropriate authority mandated that the report is produced on an annual basis. That would initiate the second stroke, and that being that P-20 when operating is provided the resources so that they can assess the capacity needed to produce this report on a regular basis, which includes reexamining and fortifying their commitments with those agencies contributing the relevant data for producing the report.
I too want to commend Commissioner Russell Tucker and the chief and your team that has taken the leadership roles around this. One of the things I've heard you say a few times during A G's presentation was your commitment to transparency. And, you know, there is an absolute spirit here to not hide the things that aren't telling a positive story, but to put out there in front of us what our challenges are so that we can bring the right thinking and the effective approach to address those and the right advocacy to push for things. So I too want to thank the Commissioner for that. I see Mr. Taylor.
One question, Andrew. Are you suggesting that AEPs are themselves somehow causative of disconnection, or is it that the disconnected get put into AEPs of every public?
Mr. Taylor, I appreciate that question very much. Just to be clear, the AEPs for the...
Sorry, the alternative ed.
Alternative ed. AEPs. Oh, the alternative ed. So if you're referring to the slide of the associated factors, it's not a causation analysis at all. Thank you. Is that responsive? Yes, that's what I wondered.
Vice Chairman. I'd like to want to thank all of you for bringing this report and really just to increase visibility to this issue. It is so important that we highlight everything here, that the work is being done at the state of Connecticut and for our children. And this will help. And it's, you know, it is the great work of the staff. I had that pleasure of being able to attend the staff meeting last week, and it was so evident to see that work done and how hard the staff works on this. This will only help bring more visibility to this issue and to help us with our five-year plan. So thank you very much. And I must say thank you to the Dali Education for your continuous support of all our Connecticut students. It is just, we are just so grateful for them. So thank you.
Other questions or thoughts?
Just waiting to see. That's okay. I really just wanted to also just add my voice of thank you to Barbara Dally, Andrew, the teachers there for the work that you've done. You know, the concept that you got me at hello, you got me at the fact that we have a mutual responsibility for making sure that all the students are supported. You mentioned inside the schoolhouse doors and outside the schoolhouse doors, and that where we talk about that here a lot, about the need for us to merge that together in order to get the results that we're working for. So appreciate the opportunity, as you've heard us talk about here, the focus on attendance, which we know is so critical. We collect that information for those on a monthly basis, so we don't just wait for an autopsy at the end of the year. And probably one of the only states that's doing that at a monthly basis, so we can see what's happening so that we can deploy the supports necessary for districts and for the community at large. So that's great. But thank you for the voice that I say around this table, funding what works and backing that up. We need the evidence of what's working to make sure that we can have those conversations. So I just appreciate having another voice saying those same things about the need for cross-sector collaboration, supporting our districts, looking at where the risk factors are. And it also is about us, the state agencies, working together. We've talked about this here as well. We talked about Demus and TCF and all our agencies. And so under the governor's leadership, that is something I believe that we do very well at the commissioner level, collaborating, housing, collaborating across the system because it matters. And so I just really want to thank you for that, and we'll continue to beat this work together. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you again for this collaboration and helping BCG with the data. It really could have not happened, even if you wanted to pay whatever. It could have not happened with everybody's help. Is, I think, that's a really good example of continuing to work this way because it's a difficult problem to tackle. Everybody has to come together. Thank you so much. And for the hard work, really, you care so much about the student.
Board members, please join me in thanking Barbara, Andrew, and Adler for joining us today and presenting this and for this work. And you certainly have laid out, and I do believe you're speaking to a group who shares the moral imperative. I appreciate your laying that out in terms that reflect the benefits for all of us to focus on the young people. And you are always welcome to be here, and you're always welcome to continue to hold us accountable for the role we play in partnering on this. So thank you. Going to be mindful of our vice chair's need to exit the meeting shortly and allow her to do the committee report for accountability and support item 10B.
Yes, thank you. Accountability and support met on October nineteenth through school plans. On October fifth, we had a wonderful visit to Waterbury School System. We actually visited four schools. I was accompanied by my fellow members, Mr. Exley, Mr. Harris. We're seeing great improvement in Waterbury. This was a wonderful visit to see. And for so many board members that are familiar with Waterbury, they really have come a long way, and it was just a fabulous visit to see. Upcoming visits for, I know some of you are coming with us, but they are used third lady board member, kind of copying us, Artie Derby, Spencer, and you, Britten. And our next meeting will be December thirteenth. Your CIRC report is enclosed, but I do want to mention, since this past week, we had our annual, our quarterly board meeting, and Irene Parisi and staff presented Open Connecticut to the CIRC board. It was a fabulous, and for those of you on academic standards, you know, we've seen that quite a bit and have played around in Open Connecticut, and the CIRC board actually got to experience that QR code and everything. And so we spent some time diving deep into Open Connecticut and the curriculum set that Connecticut has. So I thank you for that.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for vice chairman?
Great, thank you.
And the mention of school visits is reminding me that I need to appeal to board members. We have charter renewals upcoming. Many of you have responded to the call for volunteers to be at the charter meetings. We have two, and it remain uncovered. And we need a board member to travel to London for the visit on Thursday, December fifth, and that is specific to ISAC. I forgot what that is.
It has a lot.
Words. And so I need a December fourteenth board member and volunteer and a board member for the visit to Common Ground High School on January third. So please check your calendars and reply if you are able to do one of those. Okay, we will move now to our sole but very important action item for today, which is the adoption of the five-year comprehensive plan for education 2023 and 2028, prepared for learning, life, and work beyond school. The board was in a motion to adopt the item. Second. And properly seconded. Sorry, Mr. Norton. Norton has joined us at the table. We are eagerly awaiting this report and eager to hear from you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, I'm very eager to deliver the report. As you know, the Connecticut State Board of Education has undertaken a month-long process of developing the 2023-28 Five-Year Plan facilitated by Jonathan Costa from Ed Advance on behalf of the RSC Alliance. During this process, we met for a day-long retreat at Phoenix Manufacturing in Enfield, where the previous planners reviewed and thoughts, ideas, and aspirations were discussed about what the new plan could include. Do you remember that meeting? It was a wonderful meeting at Martha Prow's facility in her conference room, and all of the yellow stickies, the Post-it notes that you all put all of your ideas on, too. I've never seen so many Post-it notes in one place at one time. It was a sea of yellow. And it was a good, a long day, but a good day. A lot was accomplished, and we managed to conclude the retreat with major themes that would set the framework for the plan development. While doing the retreat, the data collection and constituent learning process engaged nearly three thousand Connecticut residents, educators, parents, and community members from a representative demographic in an exploration of the critical topics outlined by the board. Focus groups were conducted, surveys completed, and discussions had with stakeholders in the Connecticut education community. The responses were collected and presented to the board at a second retreat here at 450 Columbus Boulevard. When the four strategic priorities included in the plan were determined. Agency leadership then worked over months to add action items and outcomes meant to fulfill the priorities. As a review, the four strategic priorities are as follows, in no particular order. All learners are supported, including those with high needs and have equitable access to education regardless of background or advantage, as well as access to great teachers and leaders in a diverse educated workforce. Learning spaces are safe, compassionate, and culturally responsive, and are designed to support the academic, physical, and social, emotional well-being of all learners, including learners of color, multilabel learners, those with a disability, learners experiencing food, housing insecurities, learners coming from low-income families, and those who identify as LGBTQ plus. Elevate Connecticut's curriculum frameworks to provide support for the development of rigorous, engaging instruction, and for the reliable assessment of universally required skills for life beyond school and a lifelong love of learning. Finally, create opportunities for all students to explore multiple career pathways through coordinated and rigorous programs that are developed in partnership with institutions of higher education and local and regional employers, and then aligned with economic opportunity and advance students in careers of their choice. A public comment period of approximately one month resulted in positive and helpful feedback, which did not require any changes to the draft plan that you have already seen. What will be helpful as the agency moves towards implementation. Some general comments included, "I appreciate the emphasis on students' health and wellness." "This is a skillfully thought-out plan." "I'm glad to see such an emphasis on physical, mental, and emotional health." "This plan is suitable for all grades, levels, and students." "I think that the plan is quite inclusive and aware of the changes that are occurring in our society and with our youth." I did receive an email, Teresa McLaren, the Executive Director of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. I would like to share that with you. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education commenced the State Board of Education with the effort reflected in the draft five-year comprehensive plan for education. The four strategic priorities reflect longstanding positions of CADE. We look forward to working in partnership with local and regional boards of education, the State Board of Education, the Commissioner, and the State Department of Education staff to implement the action steps. While in another email, Eastern Connecticut State University President Elsa Nunez wrote, "It is comprehensive. It does check all the boxes." In addition, the plan has received positive publicity already, with the draft plan included in stakeholder and interest group newsletters. One headline being "State Board's Five-Year Plan: Equity, the Whole Child, Literacy, Career Pathways, and More." And at least one report in an online publication with the headline, "Career Planning, Literacy, and Equity: Connecticut Board of Education Priorities." And with that, I present to you the final draft of the 2023-28 Connecticut State Board of Education Five-Year Plan: Learning, Life, and Work Beyond School. Your consideration and votes.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Board members have all had such a hand in creating this. You have all been in multiple drafts, had the opportunity to weigh in on those drafts and add your thoughts to get us to this point. So want to thank each of you for the seriousness with which you undertook this. Want to certainly commend Commissioner Russell Tucker for the commitment, the questions and guidance that you provided to this, and in giving us, Mr. Norton, to do this work with, as a partner, and all of your team members who contributed to it and getting us to this place. So Richard, did you want to?
So the work, should this receive your approval? Today's just beginning, because what the department will now do is really step back and said, how do we operationalize the plan? What are those specific targets? What are those specific strategies that will now underpin the outcomes, the results that we're looking for? And you have the commitment, as we did with the last plan, that we will then be coming to the board, we'll share that with you. And then subsequent to that, we'll come into the board to do updates on each of the goals, to tell you where we are, whether we are finding challenges achieving those or making progress. But that will become a regular cadence into a board meeting so that the board is kept fit, we as the board and the public will be kept informed of how we're doing in actualizing it. And oh, by the way, and thanks, Keith. I know he has done a massive amount of work communicating between and advance this body here and the department, because staff, we've already been meeting with that, as I mentioned. We had staff meeting, and a big part of the work that happened at the staff meeting was staff already taking a look at how they're working into those goals and what things we need to do. So we've already started that internal process.
The Commissioner's telling you, don't try to change it now. Board members, questions, comments? I'll comment it out on those stickies. Yes, yes.
Well, I just wanted to say I really like that this directly mentions artificial intelligence. I think that's really important. I was actually at the Performance Matters forum, and the chief academic officer from CO.org was talking about AI. And I thought it was really interesting how almost none of the schools were getting guidance. They did live polls at the event, so obviously, you know, it's not perfect data, but I have wrote down some of the numbers. Forty-six percent of the districts haven't provided guidance. Twenty-eight percent said little. Twenty percent said some, and six percent said they didn't even know. So I think just really making this priority was definitely the right move, and we should really make it an effort to collect more data on AI so that we really know where we're at, you know, the live polls. So, yeah.
It's interesting. When we started this process at Phoenix Manufacturing, AI was not part of the discussion. And this has come on so quickly and so fast that by the time we had the second retreat, it was a major part of the board's discussion. And certainly, the agency is already engaging in some of this work around, what is AI? What is it going to be used for? What could it be used for? What are the possibilities?
Any other questions?
Thank you for all your work on this. And the mention of mentioning that the plan has the outcomes in general terms, and that the department will set specific targets. And so I was looking at page eight at the very bottom, where it talks about students on track with the African-based foundation, educational learning to read skill, an increased percentage of students reading at or above grade level by grade three. So I just can't get over the fact that only half of our third graders are proficient in reading. So I was wondering, are you going to have a goal for that? And so I was wondering, are you going to have a goal for that? That's but I, I learned a nasty conflict that in Indiana, they have a goal by twenty thirty. That ninety percent of the first reading and we should be immediate. So is there one involved?
We will absolutely be working through everything in the plan to determine what our targets are. Targets that are ambitious yet achievable. And we will be, the entire team will be at the table with us so we know what our starting point is, what we should be doing as interim measures and how to hold ourselves accountable. Our deputy commissioners who already started to have those conversations. So we will be doing that. Not unlike what we did for setting targets around our diversity finer performance. The targets we've set around attendance. So all of those will come back to the table as we move this forward.
I would ask each of the board committees to think about how sections of this plan relate to the work of the committees, whether it's academic standards and assessment or county support, a finance audit, legislation and policy, to think about the ways in which you might want to, there may be time also to support the board. So support the heart of the board, but please thought for that. All right. So we have in front of us a motion at the State Board of Education pursuant to subsection C of section ten dash four, the Connecticut General Statutes, adopts its five-year comprehensive plan for education twenty twenty three, twenty eight. Every student prepared for learning, life and working out school and directs the commissioner to take the necessary action. Are we ready for the votes? All those in favor, please do so. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you. Carry on. Implement. Forward ahead. I just can't help but sort of underscore the importance of all that we've, we've done today and looked at today around sort of entering where we are currently, thinking about anything we need to begin to and then have been tackled and I just I just adopted. So financial matters, I don't see anything on the agenda. They were good, right? We don't have, we don't have the steps that city board.
But nothing on the one thing, I'm sorry. So in my report, I mentioned that we're certainly continuing our recruitment on top of mind for us key positions like the Chief Finance, Financial Officer, the Director of the Office of Internal Audit. So that continues to go forward. But I also wanted to introduce Roger Person, who is here. Roger works in the fiscal office and will be, you'll see him around the table with us to at least hear financial questions and all those kinds of things. He'll keep us moving while we go through that search process. So Roger, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll turn to committee reports. I know our chair is not here. It's any report from academic status assessment. Okay. The accountability and support, you heard this to the board. Vice Chair before she left. Finance audit and budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, I had some communication with Gloria McCree, who is the interim Department Chair of the Office of Internal Audit. And her question was, you're definitely holding a meeting in December. So my response back to her was absolutely. And additionally, I asked her to for twenty twenty four because that particular committee has been very inconsistent in having any sort of meeting schedule. So going forward, we'll get back on track. Good luck.
Search.
Search.
We have no doubt you will get on track with transition policy development.
Morning. So we met this morning and had discussion about three different items. One was around the fire and safety guide that this board approved a couple of years ago now. We were asked to do a review of that again and, and determined we felt like there was any sort of updates or revisions needed at this time and we agreed that it is, it's good to write as it is. So no recommendations for, for any sort of revision there. We also took a conversation about religious accommodation guidance that really stems from the testimony that we've heard from the C community. So we are looking more into that and the potential of providing guidance back to schools. So we're going to bring that back up for a discussion. And then we also discussed the philosophical rights in terms of language of accessibility and process moving, moving to work forward. So that was very informative and helpful and look forward to the sort of coming back with final stages of that work. And most importantly, maybe, is that we have decided to not meet at eight o'clock anymore. But instead move back to eight thirty. That's all.
Are there any questions? Let's see.
So you know, probably athletes who were signing or get drafted by professional teams. In that vein, we have a student at Ellis Tech late last month. Carpenter student named Christopher Harvey was the first high school student in Connecticut to enter a construction apprenticeship program. So they did a signing ceremony for him. His employment is a result of his work-based learning through CTECs and his carpentry program. And it marks a milestone. So CTECs were the Department of Labor for construction employers across the state. And it sets a good example. At the signing day, Representative Joe Gordon was there, Commissioner William Reddant, Dave Barlow, Mr. Don Schreiber, President of the Connecticut Construction Industries Association and Director of Business and Industry. So we're all very proud of that. Additionally, CTECs has been super important. Doctor Lee Newell has been appointed to the Governor's Workforce Council. It's alignment between the council's priorities and the form of CTECs and our shared dedication to the career readiness and to bring that way to meaningful employment in the state will undoubtedly result in a prompt development for CTECs. We are thrilled to have Doctor Newell representing CTECs on the Long Island Council. As productive, here in productive month of October, our sub-communities will leave November sixth and seventh and the whole board will leave.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Right. And in terms of NASB.
Yes.
What are your final, final report for?
One song, yes. So recovering from that week at the conference going day and night. But anyway, I want to add my congratulations to Vice Chair Benham for being elected as the Northeast Area Director and a member of the board. I'm sure she'll do a great job of carrying on Connecticut's leadership of the Northeast region. And so, so it's not to take up so much time here. I did a written report, which I sent to everybody. So you're welcome to read that and ask any questions to do that. I I would recommend to members of the board to get more involved with NASB. I know, yeah, where you can involve, go to you, right? Great way to learn about what's going on in other states, their education systems. And I was mentioning that Mr. Harris was involved in the Public Education Positions Committee. And now there'll be an opening on the Government Affairs Committee. And I think it would be advantageous. We learn a lot about what's going on in Washington and Department of Education and also education in other states. And when a chief was reporting about the data, it brought to mind, there was a session at the conference on data. And I came away from that meeting with the realization that Connecticut is at the forefront of that accessibility of data. So that was, that was picking up. So thank you very much for this. I was turning to represent as being.
Thank you. Thank you for your engagement with NASB. For our board to do the work of NASB and bringing back, allowing it to be an opportunity for you to go and, and talk about what we do and bring back good information to us as well. So thank you for your service and your leadership in NASB. All right, I think I jumped around a lot, but I think I checked off every item. I don't believe I jumped over anything. So I think at eleven eleven, I think that was a tribute to Alden returning to us. A quick meeting today, like no promises for December, but at this point at eleven twelve, the chair will initiate a motion to adjourn.
No, nobody, nobody wants to hand.